Join us tonight without your commitment and contributions or the Portland heart, you will continue to make a great impact. Okay? So congratulations to all of you for reaching and recording our 10th anniversary during the first quarter of 2025. I call your name if you can come up and pitch your ticket with Mayor Dodge. Michael Benjamin is celebrating 10 years of outstanding service and dedication with the police department. Are you here, Michael? I know Michael already appeared. And if he's with the police, something better happen, we'll give him love and cheer. Uh Jake Spencer is here, celebrating 10 years of outstanding service and dedication with the public works department. Come on up. Uh we also have Amanda Del Bianco. She is celebrating 20 years with the village of Portland Hearts Rep Department. Come on up. And last but not least, we have Matt Hannah, celebrating 25 years with the renovation parts of the park.
Great opportunity to amend the agenda to, okay, to move to number 10. The discussion on Elm Street extension portion of Elm Street.
So.
Sorry.
So move.
Good second.
Second.
Right, good motion, second.
Trusty Katsinis?
Aye.
Trusty Leeble?
Aye.
Trusty Newley?
Aye.
Trusty Malani?
Aye.
Trusty Lawrence?
Aye.
Trusty Lawler?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Why don't we take the citizens who want to do address the board? Heather? If you could, I wish that, I was gonna tell you, speaking of the microphone, introduce yourself, you just gotta speak up. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather. Um I was before you guys two weeks ago, and I just wanna thank you for letting me address the board again. I would thank you, Jim, for answering all my questions and helping me out. And Gina, I appreciate your time on Saturday, took time off of your busy schedule and away from your total time to come and find out the long facts about this. And um Elm Street really appreciates that. Um everybody was um informed that we were able to have a discussion. Mayor Dodge and Portland Parks are all campaign on stability, transparency, fiscal responsibility, and inclusive government. And um our concerns regarding Elm Street traffic fall into all these categories. I wanna focus mainly on the safety issue. There um attached to the agenda for this evening, there was a traffic study completed. Um the problem was that the traffic study wasn't completed on Elm Street. It was only completed on 91st Avenue. And so many of us feel that there is so much traffic on Elm Street already. We have cut through traffic now at Mariannas um establishment. Lots of people are coming through our neighborhood, going to Mariannas. Lots of times they don't stop at the stop times, um and they just fly through. And vice versa, um coming back from Mariannas at 138th and Elm. Lots of times when we're coming home from work, we are often sure we're gonna be hit by a car who doesn't stop at that stop sign. Um in 2006 or '07, we petitioned to have that become a freeway stop sign. And that was a problem back then. Um and it's only gotten worse since Mariannas has been in. People use this as a cut through street to get to the mall as well. And so there, there are safety concerns northbound. Um Elm Street's location in relation to the railroad tracks, once that railroad track is stopped, um once over, once the train is there and people are stopped, they'll cut through Elm to get around it. Um there's already congestion on Elm Street at 135th Street. So when you're on um 135th and Elm, you're trying to exit to get onto some, um to get, when you're on Elm Street trying to exit to get onto 135th, there's always plenty of cars backed up. There's poor visibility, so when you're on Elm and 135th, there's a hill. So it's already um a safety issue. There's no turn lane on Elm Street. Um 135th and Elm is actually an activity drop off location. And so we don't have sidewalks on that old Portland park. So our kids are getting dropped off from activities. And in the fall, when the time changes, they're walking up this hill with cars zooming past them. No sidewalks. We don't want sidewalks, but we also don't want an increase in traffic. Um Elm Street stopgap, so the south end, where they're talking about cause three minutes?
Yeah, did you get this wrapped up?
Oh, right. So the south of Elm, the dead end, um people use that as a place to, you know, get onto the bike path. So when you dead end, dead end at 139th and Elm roughly, that dead ends onto the walking path. That walking path, people are walking down the street with their dogs, they're biking down there. That's what that is used for. Um The area that's proposed a through street is low and wet, which increases likelihood of slippery icy conditions. And then also, you're making a 90-degree turn into a bike path and power lines. It's just not safe. Um I would let other people express their viewpoint. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Phil and Joe. Would you come up if you could just introduce yourself?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time to discuss that.
I don't know if everybody can, sorry with the mic, that's not working, so you're just gonna have to.
Oh, okay.
If you have kids, you know a loud voice.
Yes, I do. Okay, I'm trying to rephrase myself, it's a long time. We are delightful guests. We lived at uh 135th or Elm Street in Orland Hills for the last 53 years. The data analysis done in May of 2025 does not reflect the traffic pattern on Elm Street. We are well aware of the increased volume of traffic speeding and noise that already exists from the north entrance at 135th Street and now because that's where we are. Currently, the increased traffic pattern comes from the subdivisions to the west and south of Orland Hills as direct access to Elm Street exists on 92nd Avenue, 136th, 137th, and 138th Streets. The only access, access from the subdivisions east of us is at 137th Street. If the proposed Elm uh Elm Street and 139th Street extension is approved, we believe that the commuters will use Elm Street as a thoroughfare from both directions. This will significantly increase traffic on a, on a stretch of road with no sidewalks or streetlights for children and pedestrian safety. Residents are wondering what the benefit of this proposal is to extend this street. Um as previously stated, we are, we are waiting for the FOIA information, which will provide us with the current and appropriate traffic study of Elm Street, if indeed one was done. And if, if one wasn't done, we would like to request maybe that one be done so that we could, you know, maybe that would enlighten or reinforce, you know, the dangers that do or could come with this. The residents in our community believe that this extension will increase the traffic, speeding, and noise and further diminish the old neighborhood aesthetics that we have enjoyed for many years.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, I'm in for this, I'm also resident at Elm Street with my wife Diana for about the last 15 years. First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak with you, for my assault and assault on you. Um it's not three things I never wanted to just say, and I think sometimes for me it's a bit tired of visualizing, and I'd like you to do that for you today. First, we should want to try to understand the need for 139th Street extension, how do you visualize why Elm Street is so busy? And then determine what might affect that extension was hurt. So first, to understand what the need is for the 139th Street extension. Um the traffic count study that is provided, there's a small paragraph in there that gives a lot of very important information. I'm kind of a baby nerd, that's why I do statistics wise all day. So forgive me, you just trust me, but feel free to interpret. Eighty percent of the amount of red bond traffic at 91st Avenue is going to residents, going to the homes. And you can see that on the map. Just visualize 91st going to the top right of the farm. Seventy percent of the southbound traffic is residents, is rather folks going to 143rd Street. So what does that tell us? And maybe we just fill down that information, literally the three things, if you look at the map. On that upper right quadrant, those folks wouldn't use the extension. They're already going in the residence, if they're in the country run, they don't need to, they have. On the lower right, those folks don't need it because the southbound people are going to 143rd Street. And as we're very clearly identifying here, Elm Street folks online. So if you take a look at the map, why don't the folks on Elm line, if you look at those orange highlights?
The map that you provided?
The map that was provided, yes, thank you. Um if you look at the orange highlights, you can see that Trump Humphrey Drive, there are four streets that all puddle through to 138th Street. And these all puddle further to Elm Street and then out to 135th. So Elm Street is kind of the bottom. All of it belongs for us, really newly developed. Um this was compounded further with the addition of missing many residences that were built between 139th and and 141th blocks at Humphrey within the last decade. You know, that kind of highlighted the orange. This, as our other neighbors have mentioned, makes it very difficult in dangerous for folks picking up kids from bus, walking with dogs like Diana Nike or somebody doing that. So what might happen if this extension occurs? Take a look at the two cars in that map provided that are starting out, the two folks that were there on Elm Street or on Timber Trail. And allow me to do your Google Maps for just a moment. So.
About a minute left.
No problem. So, starting on 130th Street, 139th Street, you go north on Elm, you head north, stop on Elm Street, continue on, stop on 135th Street. Very easy. On Timber Trails, you go down Timber Trails, stop immediately on Pebble Beach, go out late right, stop on Cog Hill Lane, continue on, stop on Lincoln Shutter. Take a look down Lincoln Shutter, continue on, stop at Pine. Complete the turnabout on Pine, continue on, head north, and stop at 135th Street. So needless to say, very, very simple down Timber Trail. So what might happen? Ultimately, like water, people, everybody takes a path of these positions. So we're very confident that that cut over traffic will continue to persist and end up more so on Elm Street. So thank you again for your time, we appreciate it.
Is this a tech team?
For assistance.
When please introduce yourself.
Excuse me, my name is Michelle Farms. I live on a quarter of 137th and Elm Street. Uh first wants to thank the city for updating our streets to improve our neighborhood. That's of allness, and thank you for that. However, I am against the extension of Elm Street to the adjacent neighborhood. From the view of my porch for the last 25 years, I consistently see the misuse of our streets in the form of speeding, incomplete stops, and ignoring the stop sign on the street. We use our streets to walk, bike, push through, go on runs, walk, get socialized with the neighbors as other people do in their areas on sidewalks. Our through street addition comes more traffic into the subdivision that's not built like other subdivisions. We don't have that access to, you know, wall on a sidewalk. Um our walking path is shared with all these vehicles that can be on the road. Our neighborhood, the area cannot safely support more through traffic. And I thank you for your attention.
Before, this is a request that's actually from staff, George, you were staff on providing. Yes. Appreciate it, do you could just kind of give a, just a, a brief overview of how we got to this point? I'll do a second.
George, I think Joel has the history, I can talk about the traffic.
Okay, right.
Joel, when I was in Public Works Director, uh back in early March of, uh early 2024, the discussion of the renovation of the uh street was ongoing for the upcoming years. When we had a development, it's kind of a green law area. Come to the village about developing some of that land there, uh which is a mixture of wet areas as well as developed areas. They came to engineering and development services, asking about, you know, some of the uh the rules for the development. At that time, we also looked at traffic and access and so forth. So engineering sat down with Public Works and had some initial discussions of what are the, uh what are the impacts for uh that area of development? Some of the things we talked about were fire police access, garbage truck access, snow, snow pile um operations. That's the perspective of, kind of of what we were looking at. Um we knew that uh there was other areas of traffic flow onto Elm Street as well currently. You guys kind of highlighted that already, uh from the west. Um with that, being that Public Works was doing the road project, uh we decided to bring it to the board and ask if we should modify that design to include the extension to help support that development area as well as the flow and connectivity in the area. So we did take it back to the board, they did approve that uh APD design to modify the design of the road. Um that we, obviously from there. We, once we got the bids for the project, we brought it back for approval. And then we started mobilizing with the contractor. And then that's, you guys got to see the letters about the contract and the work on. So uh yeah, from a rationale, I was looking at the development of the site, the connectivity, traffic patterns, police, fire, ambulance support services, garbage services, and snowball services was the rationale. It's kind of the word we got to here today. Keshi did out loud with the traffic study and it's chat counts, it's obviously.
And that's, uh unless there's questions about those, the traffic studies, uh you know, it's, it's, this is really a um a project where it looks like it's been in the making for some time. But um I, I think staff is, is willing to forego this, this extension based on the, the direction of the board.
Just before we open up for board comments, I used to live on Pebble Beach between Cog Hill and Timber Trail. I was pretty familiar with the traffic flows in the area, so I appreciate bringing back just how traffic moves in this area. Joel, appreciate it, respect, I guess, for a discussion.
Mr. Chairman. Justin Martin. Uh if I remember correctly, I mean, our, our conversation up here could have really went either way when we talked about this. I think, you know, Bill's unhappy because it's in his neighborhood, it'll get on his, but that goes without saying. Uh but uh, you know, I think, you know, the things that you focused on was the, the fire safety, police safety, accessibility, right? I mean, I think uh this was something that actually the fire department had a conversation with you, if I remember correctly, about this road, when we were talking about this.
Yes, we're, we're looking at how can, how can we service that area? Because the fire station is to the south on 143rd.
Right.
And uh in order to get in there, it's more time. Like if you guys mentioned it, kind of have to wrap around, get back into that area. So when we have a development, we look at that kind of thing. It's not only development, but also existing people.
Okay, because I think the estimated time for the fire department to get there, I think the time goes an extra seven minutes or something like that, because they have to go all the way around to 135th, right?
Uh yeah, they, they can get a little bit.
Or they could come up through, through here and come back down, which is probably gonna take just as long because those streets. So, so yeah, I mean, I think that was, that was the overall concern. I mean, the amount of money we were going to spend on this project was very small. I think it was like a hundred thousand dollars or something like that. So it was like, okay, let's just work the end of the road program since we're doing it. So it's like, however we move about this, I think, you know, if it'll make people happy to have longer access for the fire department to get to their house if they catch a fire, that's fine too. But I, I really think that that's a concern. If I lived there, I would want to make sure that I had access to, you know, things like fire and police if I needed them quickly. But until we understand, George, that those are.
Mr. Chairman. Joseph Katsinis?
Yes, you brought a very valid point, that there is no sidewalks. It, it could be very dangerous because the road is flat, it's hilly. And that was a very valid point, and you should take that into consideration as well. The last thing you want to do is, yeah, you know, save your house from fire or ambulance, but then you create an ambulance call because of it, you know? So medicine concern, thank you for bringing that up.
Trusty Healy?
I'm very familiar with this, uh this area. I may have seen my car being taken a shortcut through there. So it's a, uh it, it's a quiet neighborhood with, uh but this traffic is a big problem, I think. And I, I, because I'm going, uh living near there and going through there, I think all the comments by the citizens were right on. And uh, you know, I haven't, uh I've never been for this extension and I'm still against it. And it's uh, and if that's what the people want, I think people should get.
Thanks. And the other thoughts, if not staff is asked first. Definitive direction, correct, George?
Correct. And then based on the direction, if, if, if it's to de-scope this element from the project, then we will bring a formal contract amendment in the next meeting. But uh if, if that's the direction were given, then the contractor will know immediately not to proceed with this extension.
Mayor Dodge?
I'm sorry, could I?
I, I just wanted to add one, because uh there is parcels that will be developed in the future. Can't tell when, but 82nd, sorry, 92nd Avenue will have to be extended southwards. And then hopefully it will be connected back to Elm Street. Uh that's by state law that we would have to provide roadway access to all parcels. So just something that uh hopefully we all understand that it will be coming in the future.
Appreciate, I heard you write, you said at some point it may be developed, is that correct?
So when we started discussing it with the Public Works, that's when a developer came to the village that he wanted to develop that, those parcels. And there are other conditions, stormwater, sewer and all of that, but roadway connection was part of that that village would have to allow to extend 92nd southwards.
Two, two recommended uh options here from staff, we'll see, we'll report their motion. George, you want to say the motion?
That would be great. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just a quick question for Keshi, with my name.
Yeah.
Um Keshi, okay, if the developer came in and wanted to develop that, wouldn't it be up to him to do the roads? Or the developer, would he, he have to develop the roads to the parcel?
So, so the developer will pay for it, a trustee? We would have to give him the permit to get that done, because we do have a right of way there. So the road will still have to be built. I'm just trying to make sure that our residents are aware that 92nd will have to be built southwards uh to allow access to those parcels. The cost will be incurred by the developer.
Correct.
Keshi, uh how big is that, that parcel plan? Do we have any idea how many homes would be developed on there?
So.
Just shout, Keshi, just shout.
Trusty Lawler, uh last I looked at, there's I believe six or seven parcels that goes along 92nd south of uh 139. So that, as Joel's pointing, that, yeah, right there, right, that, that's where the mouse is, if you look at that. Right there, the road will extend and then east of that and south of that. We will have to bring the road south and then east and connect it back into Elm Street.
Okay, that would be done on a developer's cost?
That would be done on the.
So, and it would have no effect on the actual traffic flow, it's just a longer time period for those residents that they were in those new houses to get out of the main part of the street, correct?
Time, I'm not sure it will matter because it would just be a loop back into, so you'll start on 92nd, go back onto, or vice versa on Elm Street, but that's the connection that will be there.
But it's possible to put a road there for them to access to those parcels.
I think the way the state law, I understand, we would have to allow, we would have to ask him to build that.
So just, any other comments on the board? I just wanted, Justin Lawrence?
Um so as the presenter mentioned, Heather, I think she's already was out, was out in that area. I did drive around the surrounding areas. Um it was at a, on a weekend, it sort of wasn't a lot of traffic at the time. Um but I did start knocking on doors to try to see if there was anyone who had a difference of opinion. Finally, knocked on the door, door, and struck upon someone who said that um she was acting as a leader for the group and that she sat down with me and explained things. Um I can't deny the feeling that if it were possible not to do that extension, politics considered, I thought I'd do the best not to do it, understanding the life safety issue, a very spicy issue. But also understanding all the other complexities and the fact that there is a significant amount of cut through from another area and that it's small amount of burdened zone on the traffic, so it's not much. It gets that much more burdened. In addition, when we talk about potential extension of the 92nd Street, what I see when I look at the map, and thank you for the map, this is very informative. And I'm driving around, and I had looked at maps at home, but when I'm driving around, it's not, it's more of this looking at this way. You see where you pointed out things, uh and the fact that there's a roundabout, um the sun shines here. Um and I think that if 92nd Street gets it extended, it's not really gonna cause more traffic except for the six or seven houses that would be built. Because all this traffic is still gonna be going that way, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna cause additional on Elm because these people are probably gonna go north to, to the north side and go that way or the other way. So it would only be those additional houses, which is private property that can be developed. Yes, you know, they would have the rights to develop it and for whatever the, the hometown. So um I don't see that extension having to loop it in in the future as needing this potentially detrimental as time in the other way. Thank you.
Any other comments? So just, we'll want to summarize this. So just, we'll want to summarize this, so everybody understands that if and when, and I think that's the right way to spread it, Krishid, correct? If and when that other parcel is developed, they're going to be back here having this discussion first thing in mind. Just want everybody to understand, okay? And then to the board, there's one or two options presented by staff, which is allow it to proceed or direct staff to de-scope it, kind of move it from the contract. It would be an entertaining motion for one of those two options.
Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to direct staff to de-scope and remove the Elm Street extension from the contract. Second.
Any additional comments? Please call the roll.
Trustee Christineus.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney. Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lee Quaid.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
So for now.
All right, we, we will now proceed to item E2, the code text amendments, international existing road.
This is very exciting conversation.
I'm going to stand because I'm not very loud personally, just like Gina, so I'll do my best to be loud.
You want to come in the middle?
Sure.
Up to you.
Yeah. So is the river that that works about an hour and a half, does that work on the street?
These work too.
They do?
Are we out?
Are we out?
I'm hearing myself. It sounded really loud. It's coming from here, it's got a little speaker there. Project, just project.
As loud as I can be, so. So I'm here today for, there are four items on the agenda tonight for building and health code amendments. The village, we have some draft language changes for you to consider for next month, but we have drafts available for public review. We're considering amendments to the building code and health code regulations for the end of June. The purpose of building and health codes are to establish minimum standards to protect the health, safety and benefit of welfare of the public. And recent text amendments at the state level are intended to approve upon passed regulations. Communities with local codes are expected to amend their regulations to comply with state regulations. The proposed text amendments are intended to better support our community while not becoming an unnecessary burden to property owners, businesses and contractors. And quite possibly this might alleviate self burden perhaps as well. So the, the two sets of regulations, one is the Illinois Capital Development Board, which oversees like building code regulations. And then we also have Illinois food code regulations. So the, the Capital Development Board Act establishes, established minimum standards to be considered a, for us to be considered a building code jurisdiction. So we have the international existing building code, the international building code, and then appendix G for flood resistant construction, and the international residential code. The village, our current regulations have the IBC and the IRC, we're not considering any changes for the residential code tonight. The Illinois food code, they amended, state amended the regulations in late 24. And it's really updating the previous food code in 2017 to the 2022 food code. And the route, very minor amendments compared to when they rolled up from 17. So the village code amendments summary, so we're looking at the international existing building code, the regular building code, appendix G for flood resistant construction, chapter three for elevators and conveyance systems, and a few technical corrections that we found as we were reviewing those areas of our code. Our elevator inspections, we're adjusting the frequency per state regulations, switching from semi-annual to annual inspections. And then also the health code, which I'll cover in the next few slides. So the international existing building code, we would be incorporating this by reference for the first time. It's currently in our village code. It encourages the use and reuse of existing buildings, provides options for controlled departures from full compliance with the construction codes, such as the IBC or just the international building code. It maintains basic levels for fire prevention, structural and life safety features. So it still maintains a bare minimum of safety to the public. And it could be beneficial to contractors and owners of existing buildings because they don't have to bring as much of the new building construction standards into practice.
Just a quick, a quick question. So it provides options for controlled departures before compliance with the new construction code.
Yes.
Can you unpack that just?
Yeah. So the new construction codes would be like the international building code, so that's like building a new building from the ground up. This is for the existing code, building codes, this is for a building that already exists and it needs some, in addition, or making modifications to an existing building in which doing a, applying a new regulation, a new building regulation could potentially apply an undue burden to the investment towards the building. But it's still at least keeping minimums like safety and structural standards.
Flexibility.
Yes, some flexibility, yes.
Just finish, Joe.
Okay. So for our international building code, we currently have this adopted by reference in our code, so it's just maybe some amendment, local amendments to our code. Appendix G is, will help us meet the minimal requirements of the national flood insurance program. It would help minimize losses, minimize rescue and relief efforts, and minimize business interruptions due to flooding, due to extreme events. And then in turn also help maintain stable tax base. Elevators and escalators, not too much of a big change, except what's listed here on the slide, I'll read it. Any advance after an alteration or new installation to fully pass an acceptance inspection prior to returning or being placed in the service? So if it's, it could either be an existing elevator, for instance, that is modernized to current standards, or it could be a brand new elevator, just needs to be fully ready to, for the public to use and not have like kind of a conditional approval. And then we also have some general, you know, we found a section where it was kind of tied to a code from probably like 2012 that we missed in the past, so. To agree with that, because it is related to existing building codes, which we are now proposing to incorporate the international existing building code. The elevator inspection frequency, in two locations, we have, we have reference to like semi-annual inspections. State Fire Marshal has, has annual inspections, so we're just commending code. Both, in the building permits and the fees, it talks about every six months, and there's a fee associated with having an inspection every six months. So basically just reclaiming the, the semi-annual inspection requirement for these two amendments. The Illinois food code, again, was approved in 2024, and it incorporates the, the Illinois Department of Public Health's regulations incorporate the 2023 FPA code. And the update from 2017 again to 2022 was very minor. 2017 was, I won't say an overhaul, but it was definitely a big change for a lot of people. So this is more just making some adjustments, lessons learned from actually trying to implement the 2017 code. So really, so actually our regulations just basically strengthen 2017 and 2022 in our code. And so in all this entire package, the proposed text amendments are relatively minor. We are, we've already posted the proposed changes on the village website. The health code meets an animal three day, public three day period, so we have those posted already online for public viewing. And so we are planning on further communicating the proposed updates through a listening session. We're still working out the details on that, so for anyone who's watching here or at home, visit our village, the main village webpage at urbanpark.org. And in the search box, type inspections, and that will take you to the page that we will provide updates for the listening session. We will, we do plan on holding this prior to the Monday, June 16th, 2025 board trustees meeting, where we will plan on presenting ordinances for these, these updates. And reason for this timing is the Capital Development Board expects communities to provide status on their regulations before we get to the next steps. I think we have that in.
Quick question on that, who will, your department, so how does the village notify them? Who, who owns telling them?
Oh, we, we, the development services tell us.
My goodness.
A bigger project upcoming, currently all of our codes are based on 2018 international codes. And so we can't let that go too far. The maximum staying allowed old timeline is nine years, so we plan on probably parakeet, on kind of doing overhaul, on overhaul that at least a significant update, to end this update, probably 2024 international code regulations. So that would be a much bigger undertaking, that'd be, you know, maybe by the end of 2026, adoption for that possibly. So we also have a new permitting and licensing software coming online next month, and that will help us get the board out more in an e blast type of format for future listening sessions.
All right.
All right.
These were discussion items, are any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I was wondering how often are elevators, commercial elevators, installed?
Chairman, if you want me to take that?
Yeah. Sure. Yeah, Stacy's our head of building division manager.
Hi, how are you? So there was significant change to the office of the state fire marshal post pandemic in 2021. In May of 2021, they required a lot of updates for door restrictors. They required all new elevators to have video and audio monitoring systems. And so that can be very cost prohibitive, number one, and there's a rolling compliance for that, which the state mandates. Secondly, the state has always only required an annual inspection. It has been up to municipalities to do semi-annual inspections. But because of the required updates, the elevator service companies cannot technically meet, and the contract does not call for our elevator provider, our third party elevator provider to do semi-annual inspections. And so number one, we would be running behind because there aren't inspectors available. And number two, it's really more advantageous for us to encourage those updates to remain compliant. Is that helpful?
Yes, it does. So at a minimum, once a year?
At a minimum, once a year, and that is, that's the state fire code requirement. And then if it should fail, that annual review, specifically there's a three day window for them to get a reinspection. Most municipalities will work with an elevator provider, if it is a processed or a staged process to bring that elevator into compliance, to make sure that accessibility is not impacted.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman. Justin Maloney. Just to go back to the, the software, I mean, I think, I think that's going to be pretty beneficial because you guys have been fortunate to not sit through the last round of modifications that we made to the code. They were pretty lengthy, there was a lot of changes, a lot of corrections, a lot of reviews. This is pretty straightforward, this is pretty easy to do, but being able to see some type of automation for this to make it easier for you, I think, it will be a lot better for you and for us in the future. So I'm glad to see that we're working on something. Joe Liston. The listing committees, you guys are putting that in because, can you explain why we're doing that? I mean, I think I have pretty good grounds for why we'd want to do that, because I know on the residential side, you said we're not doing anything in the residential at this point, until later. But sometimes we put codes in that might not make sense to a building, or, or we put these codes in, but we don't ask the homeowner, the contractor. I've seen this in the residential side, where you might be required to do something that really doesn't make sense. And so it's an undue financial burden on the homeowner. Like for instance, right now, if you have a house over 3,000 square feet or a park, you're required to put 400 amp electrical service in. Although speaking to numerous electricians, that's completely overkill for residential. So, you know, that's the code, and so now the homeowner has to, or want to spend more money. So are we seeing that in the commercial side of things as well?
Yeah, so listening session is more to get feedback from the development community, both from like a general contractor standpoint, but even the developers that are, you know, including the developers who are going through the type of process, through the planning issue as well. So it's an infancy stage as far as planning, though, we're trying to capitalize on that opportunity coming this.
Any other questions? I guess we'll follow up, we don't have to do it tonight, like at an issue like that, where there's a, a limit, 3,000 square feet kicks into a different standard. If all the people who do this day in, day out practically tell you a hill house is, what, 400 amps? I heard that from. What is our, what is our option as a municipality to not make that happen? You don't have to sound.
Or, or, you know, planning yours and the instructor's, that's for Keith and Stacy's as well, so.
Jump in, just, let's keep the short stuff.
The short version of the answer is that you could amend that to amend the NEC with an amendment for that amperage requirement.
So I guess as we go forward with the listening session, let's be open to the idea, we're going to get good feedback from the people who are doing this, and it's not necessarily us. Why would it make sense, like, or your code, or, let's just allow for that as we go forward.
Yes, we can, yes.
You covered four, I have any other questions or comments before we move on? Thank you.
Just to clarify for the record, they just discussed numbers. E2, the text amendment to the international existing building code. E3, the text amendment to the health code. E4, the text amendment to the international building code. E, and E5, the text amendments to the elevator inspection frequency. We will now proceed to E6, which is the 2025 sidewalk replacement.
Trustee Healy.
I move to recommend, I move to recommend to the village board to approve and authorize the execution of a contract agreement between Village Park and Strata Construction Company of Anderson, Illinois, as the lowest qualified responsive bidder for ITV 2025 GSO21, 2025 sidewalk replacement program for a cost of $467,747.05 plus a contingency amount, a contingency of $50,000, for a total not to exceed the contract of $517,747.05.
Is there a second?
A second.
Good motion, second, before we call the roll, any questions or discussions from other members of the board? George, Joel, you guys have any background on this?
A little bit of, of, Mr. Page, for Joel, but I'll keep it short, five slides, man. But just so you can understand the importance of the program, I have a few things. In 2022, GH did a inspection of our sidewalks, you can see the dots on, on the slide. They rated them high and they were low, over 10,000 defects were identified. We tackled the high as the most important and some mediums to try to get those done as well. And that's what this replacement is. We're looking at larger children hazards that we have in the village, the lows, we're doing in-house. Just looking at quick status of things, the road improvement program does a lot of our sidewalk repairs as we go through the neighborhoods, but that's usually about two years. So what we did for this program is to really try to address some of those highs right away over the past two years. As you can see, the blue is completed, the purple are the ones that we still are trying to do this year.
The purple are the ones that we still are trying to do this year. We have a budget this year and we use the border field tax that we get money from the state to adjust this program. Just talked about that. Thank you very much for opening the vote here soon. And that's just a summary of how the bits came out. It was a really a great opportunity for some great cost savings for the homes bidder. We had worked with them before and so we do have confidence that they can do the work even with the low. They really need, they really wanted the project as well, that they were saying. We do have a, a plan to do a second round, to do some additional work. So we will edit that out and we'll bring that back to the board for approval. This is through a preventative ITV process. So that we will bring that back probably around the July timeframe, without a fall work. Lastly, we do want to just help improve our communication to our residents. So what we're figuring is we're looking at a more robust communication method. Kind of lays out what the common questions maybe people have had in the step-by-step process that occurs so that they can see as the sidewalk gets pulled out what are those kind of things that they're going to see while the work is ongoing. And also, we're looking at going forward in the future out years. Our road program obviously would still be doing the, any kind of sidewalk. Roots like to pop up, things settle, there's under linings, that always happens. But we also look at breaking the zones of the village into a little more shorter period of time to allow more frequency that we can then maybe address those high ones that are popping up. And we do it by zone every year, which keeps it a more reasonable number and we can keep having to address those defects. That's all I have. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Justice Lee, please.
Thank you. I have a question. You said the villages worked with Strata before. Was, is it recent? And what kind of project was it?
Yes, they did the sidewalk replacement, not last year, but the year before, so that'll be 2023. They did the first part and they addressed the blue area, the bottom area predominantly. We set up and started that area. Next year, we can adjust a lot of the other goo, piece of the bridge area.
Thank you.
Any other comments from staff?
No, just that if, if the, if the board approves this, this recommendation to be a roll, it's on the Board of Trustees' agenda for approval and staff report.
There's no other comments, just a couple of comments. So I, we're going to increase the way we approach communicating to our residents on this. And then as Joel and George and I spoke, which is, there's always going to be, this will always change. We're never really going to be done with this, just like road group. And so I'd like to make sure we start going into other phases. We talk about how we make sure the data we're operating off is accurate. Joel and I had some conversations on that one. So I think there's more out there. Let's figure out a way to find it, build up the program.
I think we might have a smaller fix sometime. We can hone in on the zones. I think we can evaluate and then input it to the next year's list of work.
Thank you, Joel. There's a motion, a second, if any other questions, please call a roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Waller.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinis.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lee Quin.
Aye.
Mayor Dade.
Aye.
E7, health insurance renewal proposals.
George, you want to give a quick background on this?
Yes, so previously, the village board.
Sure, trustee Malan, if you'd like.
No.
I can, I, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Lee Quin.
I move to recommend the village board to direct village staff to solicit health insurance proposals from the intergovernmental personnel benefit cooperative, also known as IPBC, as well as a comprehensive re-proposal for the health insurance and to property and casualty insurance and workers' compensation insurance from the Marsh McLennan Agency.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. So is there any discussion from the board or questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malan.
So I, I think we've had this in front of us once before. I've heard there is a lot of great comment here. I think George, you've worked on this in the facts, right? The same thing with the pool of resources versus what I got to bid.
Yeah, in 2022, we did get a proposal from IPBC. And at that time, combined savings was a million dollars.
Right, I think, I think you had gone out, you had gone out to get the core correct. And I think there were some things we're missing, like I think our high value claims that they were missing from it. And then I think we went back to the, the, is that correct?
No, the, the comparison is, is it was an amp to amp, same, same coverage, same carrier? That's what it was.
Just kind of curious why we're reapproaching this all of a sudden. You know, I think if, you know, every few years, I think it's great to go out to bid and like we normally do with this. You know, after two years, we go out to the market and we ask, you know, people to bid on this. And we usually give to the, the best overall package, right? And that's, you know, been fairly consistent with what we've been getting as far as the best package goes. So, you know, I feel that I would be, if we were just going to, well, you know, do another RFP with, you know, the request proposal, I think we'd be okay for that because it's healthy. Whereas I don't know if I necessarily agree with the IP, IPBC way of doing this. Just might be something.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Justice Katsinis.
Yes, it seems like one part of it would go to the IPBC comprehensive proposal. But property and casualty entitlements from Marsh McLennan Agency. Is there any other prospect on Marsh McLennan Agency?
So if the, if the village board provides this correction, what will happen is we will seek proposal from IPBC for health insurance renewal and Marsh McLennan for health insurance renewal. But what we will also do is ask the Marsh McLennan Company to also give us a comprehensive proposal for the property casualty liability portion as well. The Marsh McLennan Company is the, they're the ones that bought Porton Insurance Group in August. So they're the, they're the new, they're the new owners of Port. So we would ask them as our, as our current broker, to still provide quotes for both health and liability. Whereas for IPBC, we would just ask for health because they are only in health risk pool.
Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Justice Wong.
I think it's important that we go out every, whenever we can to look at cost savings to the villagers for the park. If we have the ability to save a million dollars a year, which we could use for police officers or racial parks or other amenities. I appreciate that. I think it's important that we should, we should look at this. It should be, you know, we all do it from our own home insurance. Every year, autumn insurance, we, we go back to the market and ask them to requote it and raise the premium. So I think I agree, we should go out and look for it.
Any further comments, Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Healy. George, when you go through this, if you could say, how do I, it's easy to get in with somebody and I hope it's just as easy to get out. So I hope there's no strings attached or whatever. There's a minimum number of years or whatever for an exit clause. I'd be interested in those. Yeah, if IPBC ends up being the best value for the organization, they're an organization that was established, or intergovernmental organization. So they were established in 1979. They have, they still have clients. They still have organizations, communities that are part of that since then. They continuously get new communities joining. I think their most recent large one was the county of Lake, Lake County. Very large organization. And it really, what it does is it stabilizes increases for health insurance. They have an average over the last five years of a 3% increase each year for their PPO plans and a 2.3% increase for their HMO plans. So because of their very large buying power and their risk pooling, they were able to stabilize these prices. And they also, they also provide dividends, meaning that after you, you know, once you reach a maximum on your reserve, so your savings can go into a reserve to help offset future increases. Once you maximize your year of reserves, there's actually a payback back to the, to the municipality.
Justice Healy.
George, if you could also, one, one final thing is the oil market is a pretty financially stable village and one of the more financially stable villages that is around. And if we go into basically partnership with some of these other villages, they may not be as financially stable over the years. I'm just, I hope that there's some look at the stability of the partners in there.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Any other comments? So to pick up on trustee Healy's comments, George, as we go down this pathway, I think close scrutiny of any risk pools is important. Risk pools are attractive because of the number of people in the pool they got. But trustee Healy's comment, who's in it, you know, what are the implications? It's a gamble, so I think let's, let's see what the market tells us.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Lee Quin.
Thank you. Another, another thought I would have or concern is that what would happen, let's say if one or two villagers residents do have, have an illness that could cost a considerable amount of money. Is it going to be less likely for them to, you know, what would be the consequences of that in terms of our contract with them? Or are we going to contract with them in the future?
Yeah, so the way, maybe we can actually bring it up here. There's a slide that shows, there's actually three elements to the risk sharing. First element, if you go, it's going to be the slide that has the first phase is $50,000. So currently, that's greater. So these are the three tiers and this is how they're able to save money. So the first $50,000 in claims is self-insured. The village is self-insured right now. So this is the first 50. And then the next tier is for claims between $50,000, $1,000,000. That's part of the risk pool. And then finally, anything over $1,000,000 is, is the insured. There is a, a catastrophe insurance that will kick in at that moment. Right now, the way we really run is we are, we are self-insured and then we go into the catastrophe insurance.
Just, trustee Lee Quin, any other comments?
No.
Just George, as, as we go through this, we'll obviously keep a close look at this. It's not hard these days for someone to have a $500,000 out of a series of a millimeter's insurance. This is not trivial thing, so. All right, there's a motion, a second.
The roll. Trustee Quin.
Aye.
Trustee Waller.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinis.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Mayor Dade.
Aye.
Proceeding to the eighth Centennial Park West 2025 concert. I mean, just.
Good discussion, George. Ray Lee, so this, Ray will, yeah. Ray, if you could just give us a little bit of background.
Sure. Yeah, do you mind pulling up that slide?
Ray, you're going to have to use your outside recreation voice.
Yeah. Thank you. So good evening, mayor and board members. It is my pleasure to give you a brief update on financial projections for Centennial Park West. Next slide. Oh, sorry. So we've been hosting concerts there, ticketed concerts since 2019. In 2020 and 2023, we did free concerts in the parking lot. 2020 is because it was during the pandemic. In 2023, we did it in the parking lot, given free concert because the venue was under construction. You can see in this slide here, the, the performance of the venue and the ticket sales. So in 2019, you can see we lost $100,000 and you can see the progression from year to year. And, and that really reflects the, the level of band that we've attracted every year and the requirements to employ those bands. The higher level band, the more costly they are, the more the writers are and all the, all the background, backline and everything that we do. You can see in 2020 and 2023, the costs were much less. We weren't doing national concerts during those years. This year, the lineup here, you can see that we have on July 12th Pablo Cruz, Ambrosia and Firebomb. We've sold over 800 tickets for that show so far. We really haven't launched the marketing aggressively yet. On August 8th, we have Leonard Skinnerd lined up. And then on Trace Atkins, or sorry, on August 30th, Trace Atkins. Leonard Skinnerd, we've sold about 952 tickets. And for Trace Atkins, we've sold 866 today. And again, we haven't really launched the aggressive marketing just yet. Michael, a little hard to see in this slide. This is the budget for the, the concerts. This, each one of those colors represents one of the actual concerts. The actual budget initially was $851,000. Based on the needs for the bands, we did a budget adjustment earlier in April. And that was really to make the, to meet the requirements of the writers and everything that the bands require to, to meet their objectives for this level of band. The higher level band, you have the higher level of writer requirements that you have to meet. So we had to do that budget amendment and, and this is what the, the total looks like. So we're projecting three concert costs of a little over $1,000,000 for these three shows. This is the projected ticket revenues, again, following the colors there for each of the shows. The July 12th concert is projected to earn $43,000. Leonard Skinnerd concert is projected to earn $256,000 and the Trace Atkins concert, $169,000. And that's based on the, the column all the way to the left. So it's a projected number of tickets per show at the, the ticket price. You can see that a little bit better in this next slide. A little bit small of a slide here. But for the July 12th concert, we are projecting a total of 2,000 tickets. For the August 8th, 5,500 tickets. And for the August 30th show, 4,500 tickets. And we believe those are realistic. Of course, weather plays a, a factor into all of the ticket sales. So, you know, you're not, we want to have good weather leading into that week, but we believe these artists will, will be a good draw. Total revenue, so each, each of the concerts based on the ticket, projected ticket sales. Again, the 43,000 for the, for the July 12th, 250,000 for August 8th and 169,000 for August 30th. In this slide here, sorry. The slide here, you can see the difference of the sales and the net. So the July 12th show is projected to lose $142,000, August 8th, 279,000 and August 30th, 115,000 for projected net of 537,000. All the concerts are under contract, so it's difficult to get out of these contracts at this point without having to pay all the bands.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Lee Quin.
So if I, if I have to understand correctly, we, we are not expecting to get even close to breaking even on any of these.
Not unless tickets really jump in sales.
Okay, and how many tickets would we have to sell to break even? To, how many tickets? Because it looks like right now we're looking at a about five, we're going to be down about $537,000. How much, I mean, is it even possible to sell enough tickets to break even in?
It really depends on the artist. It would be difficult. Each show probably has the potential to get closer to earning more revenue than what you see there. But to break even would be pretty difficult, I think.
And at this point, the contracts are signed. So the way they're structured, as I understand it, the bands get paid whether we have them come or not. So we're, we're committed at this point.
That'd be correct.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Trustee Wong.
Let's say they have a concert, we've got tornado warnings and down, pouring down rain. Do we refund if we lost those tickets if people can't come, if we have to cancel it?
Normally do not. So when you purchase your ticket, it's noted on the ticket that it's a non-refundable ticket. So we did have this, have this happen once before, a few years ago with Scott Stapp. We actually had tornado warn, watches all the way to 7:00 PM and then torrential rain that prevented us from hosting the concert. So we didn't refund. torrential rain, uh, that prevented us from hosting the concert. So we didn't refund any tickets. We offered everybody that was, um, supposed to have a ticket for that show, a ticket to another show. We did have some complaints, but for the most part, it, it worked out okay.
Okay. Another question that we, when we sell tickets, how many, what percent of tickets are won at the door the day of the concert?
I would say that, um, probably less than 20%. Tickets are usually sold advanced.
Okay.
Any other questions for the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
Um, Ray, if you could tell us like how much does the village contribute towards the Taste of Orleans? Cause there's a lot of programs that we run that aren't break even and we're spending money to, to community events. So for example, Taste of Orleans, we subsidize that.
Yes. We, the Taste of Orleans, uh, for the most part loses about $100,000 a year.
Okay. And then the pool, every year, how much does the pool? And I, I hate to say lose because it's the cost of doing it. And I'm thinking your job isn't like to make money, right, with these things. It's an amenity we provide for residents. So our pool, how much do we, um?
It also is about $100,000. And the, and the pool depends on the weather. A hot summer will do a little better to break even, but, uh, as a part of that, and Joel does a lot of the, uh, capital at the pool. We don't, uh, we don't recover the capital improvements at the pool, just the operational cost.
But if you look at significant, I mean, about $400,000 for everything.
For the whole department?
For, for the whole pool, for the maintenance.
Uh, so what number you thinking of for maintenance out there? Depends on the year. Uh, this past year, we've done a lot of upgrades at the pool. Um, so it really depends on the projects that are taking place this year.
Point is, I mean, there's very few programs.
Oh, no, right.
Are running where they break even or even make money.
Especially special events. That would be correct.
I'm sorry.
Special events are very difficult to break even. They're costly events, high volume, people, and they're very difficult to break even. Recreation programs. So if you do like a Cinderella ball, you do a karate class, those are gonna make money. The trap makes money, but these bigger events, they typically are subsidized.
And of course, then we appeal a self-infitness, which were instituted at 201, I think 13 million dollars, if I'm not mistaken, you know, for maintenance and all people.
With facility, correct.
Okay. So very few, maybe our independent little place and stuff might add, might break even, but as a whole, it's happily subsidized, right, village?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board? Mr. Chairman? Trustee Malany? Uh, did you, do you have more slides? Was this pretty much it? Based on what I saw there, I think that was.
No, that was, that was.
Okay. Yeah. So, you know, I mean, again, when this went back to our policy, it's about 52% to subsidize our recreation, right?
Right.
And, um, if you look at the expenses, not losses, the expenses for these, we come up with about 53%. So we're pretty much on par for what I would consider providing an amenity to our residents and something for them to enjoy versus us trying to make a business out of it.
Our overall department subsidy is 52%.
Right. So we're plus or minus one. So I'd say that's being on track, right? So, I mean, I think that's something we have to keep in mind because we have a, you know, a, a, we subsidize ice skating rink. It's for the performing, right? We, we subsidize the sports clubs and as mentioned, they can't get me a lot of money. It's all of them now, it's fitness now, but, you know. But, but we, we put money into that as well and we're still, right? So we, we have a lot of things that we're trying to do as business ventures in the past. We go to a park, we've turned it into amenities instead because we knew we weren't gonna make up the difference. Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Trustee Law? How many people do we estimate go to Taste of Orleans?
Uh, somewhere between 30, 20 and 30,000 depending on the weather.
20 and 30,000 and it's a three-day event, correct?
Right.
Okay. And we lose about $100,000?
Yes.
And we offer concerts there?
Yes.
Okay. And so for the concert venue, how many tickets did we sell last year?
Probably upwards around, uh, 7,000.
7,000?
Maybe 8,000, yeah. Pet Bad attire was about 4,000 by itself.
Okay. So 7,000 tickets, 7,000 people used it. Do we know how many people come that buy those tickets are from natural oil department?
Uh, no, cause when they buy tickets, they're open to the general public. We do a, a two-week or about 10-day pre-sale for residents. So they get first dibs at the tickets, but that's the only one that, that expires after the first week and after that, we don't know the residency.
Okay. So a lot of our other recreation department programs that we subsidize, most of those are offered to Village Mark residents, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? All right. Just a couple of quick comments. Ray, thanks for, for the details. Um, some of the comments that were made going forward, this is all about the policy that the board chooses going forward. Pretty straightforward. We have amenities in this town. They're used 365 days a year and, um, I'll talk to the finance department about it and, uh, give you a little deeper on these, um, losses per amenity. Don't get to the bottom of this. Second question?
A9, Dugan Parkway Development, Christopher B. Burke Engineering Change Order Number One and Contract Amendment A.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malany?
Move to approve and authorize the execution of Change Order Number One and contract denoted to the original contract dated October 7th, 2024 with Christopher B. Burke Engineering LTV. Approve this on Illinois for design and engineering work for Dugan Park parking lot light. Stormwater analysis, watershed detailed design, drainage improvements for watershed and shelter restroom designed to increase the total amount to exceed contract amount by $44,300 to $282,700 is outlined in the proposal dated May 13th, 2025 and to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Sir?
There's a motion, a second. Any questions for discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Lee, what?
I'm noticing that there are, um, I think that a restroom, building with restrooms is an excellent idea. Um, I, I like a lot of these ideas, but I'm curious, um, about 10 pickleball courts?
I, I can give you a full update of the project. That's okay. So what you see here is the existing conditions of, uh, the venue. Uh, the cultural center there that you see on the left, uh, or on the right is not there, of course. Uh, so the former cultural arts center and RDC site, uh, parking lots are existing, the two tennis courts, uh, towards the tracks in the back, there's one dedicated pickleball court and a half basketball court. Uh, there's a playground, um, baseball field and a soccer field there now. So all those are existing amenities. Uh, all those are in need of updating. This is the initial plan of the, the, uh, there we go. This is the initial concept that was presented by White and Company. So when White was hired back in, uh, 2023, uh, they developed this initial concept, uh, which you see here. It is initially, or essentially the same concept that, uh, was later approved by the board. Uh, this concept came about in, with public engagement, uh, sessions. Uh, so 259 postcards, uh, were mailed to residents, uh, within a thousand, uh, feet from the park. Uh, we held a community meeting and 37 attended that. Uh, there was another meeting with the Recreation Advisory Board on August 1st and 17 residents attended that. Uh, this concept that you see here was approved by the committee of the whole and the board of trustees on the base that you see there. Uh, this concept includes the path, uh, 10 pickleball courts, uh, 30 by 40 shelter with restrooms that's attached, shade shelter with two restrooms, uh, full-size soccer field, a smaller, uh, this was initially a bigger baseball field, uh, the playground with the shelter, um, the baseball field, sledding hill, uh, the council ring, uh, the disc golf wasn't touched in this, uh, plan. Uh, parking lot improvements, the tennis courts were to stay, uh, the bocce ball courts, uh, existing shelter, skate park and a half basketball court. Uh, after the meetings took place, uh, this was trimmed down. So the asphalt loop remained, uh, 10 pickleball courts, uh, remained, the full-size soccer field, uh, the restroom shelter, uh, with the shade. Um, so it's again, two restrooms. The baseball field was reduced to 60 feet since we don't really need a full-size and another full-size baseball field at this time. Uh, the half basketball court was included, uh, the gathering space, number seven there near the restrooms, uh, for pickleball players, uh, playground shelter right next to the playground for parents as their children play. Again, parking lot improvements which are needed, uh, the two existing tennis courts and the existing shelter, which is on the south side of the property. Uh, this was approved by the committee of the whole on April 7th. Uh, there was a public hearing on April 15th and at that public hearing, there was some comments that included, uh, setting hours, which would be something that we would eventually take to the Recreation Advisory Board, uh, increasing the number of restrooms, which we like that idea, but it's very costly to increase the restrooms. So we thought we would leave it at two restrooms. Uh, those are unisex restrooms. Uh, and, uh, there was concerns about the traffic volume, but it was noted by the planning commission that the traffic would be similar to the traffic when the cultural arts center and RDC were both operational, which had quite a bit of recreation uh, uh, programs going on. Uh, there was a comment about adding a crosswalk, but that street, um, park lane doesn't really lend itself to a, a crosswalk because of curves on the north and the south and due to a crosswalk in the middle of the street would hit a, a resident's driveway. So that wasn't considered. Uh, and then there was some talk about, is there enough parking? 137 spaces is five spaces above what the requirement is. So we believe there would be enough parking. Uh, this then was approved by the, the village board on April 21st. In this slide here, you can see, uh, the playground. So normally when we do a playground, the Recreation Advisory Board will bow down the playground and will bring this to board. Uh, sometimes playground, believe it or not, can be controversial, controversial, even though their play structures, uh, it's all about the swings in the slide. So this was approved by the Recreation Advisory Board and as well as the board. Uh, you can see this is the playground that was chosen as well as pavilion, which is a, a typical pavilion for the village. Uh, one of the things that, uh, the, the Sebel did, uh, Christopher Burke Engineering did for us is did a geotechnical, uh, report and study and that found some problems, uh, within the grounds. Uh, like surprised that we have some, uh, uh, soil there that is not good soil. Uh, and so that was under the pickleball courts, under those parking lots in, in the area where the footings would be for the shelter there. Uh, so they're recommending and, and these could be options that could be bid as alternates, uh, putting under drains under the pickleball courts, uh, increasing the level of stone in new areas of the parking lots. So these are new areas that would be developed. So for example, the old RDC, um, grounds where there's just rats, that would be a 12-inch base instead of an eight-inch base. Uh, and then going deep around the, uh, restroom shelter foot, footings to make it a little more stable. Uh, the cost for the project is estimated a little over $3 million, uh, with an 8% contingency, which is typical, which puts us at $3.4 million and that's without the geotechnical, um, remediations. Uh, funding for 2025 includes $2.5 billion in capital. Uh, there's funds allocated in natural resources for the pavilion, the playground, uh, for the transformer reallocation, uh, relocation, sorry, and the stormwater repairs. And then within our department, we earmarked some money to also, uh, dedicate to this project. So it brings total funding for this project to $3.3 billion for this year. Uh, $340,000 was dedicated to the project next year, which brings us to $3.6 million for, for funding for the project. Uh, this also includes a $600,000 OSLIKE grant awarded by the state. Um, and then there is also funds that have been allocated for construction oversight for this project.
Uh, thanks. Yeah, I, okay. Thank you.
There you go. Yeah. So there is a concern, uh, 10, 10 pickleball courts. So pickleball is wildly popular, as we all know. Unfortunately, pickleball comes with some level of consequence and that's annoying. Uh, the single court we have there right now is, we really have not had any complaints on that single court. Um, I'm not sure how 10 courts are gonna play out. If you do some research about, uh, pickleball courts, they recommend that courts be located 500 feet from residents. Uh, the closest, uh, court in this plan is 250 feet away. The farthest court near the tracks is 350 feet away. Uh, you could do some sound barriers, shrubs, uh, at some places, places do that. Uh, we had a, uh, one dedicated pickleball court and I apologize, I forget the park. And we started to do some remediation, but there was concerns about security because once you put up some barriers, a sound barriers, you can't see inside the court. So we removed those and, and we've kind of living with that with a single court. Uh, so they're really not a great way to remediate that sound there other than where you locate those courts. Uh, you could ask players to use, um, paddle, softer paddles, softer balls, but that, that kind of defeats the purpose of pickleball. I don't think they're gonna wanna amend their play, especially with an investment this large. Uh, in this slide here, this is more about the, uh, contract amendment and the tasks. So Christopher Burke Engineering in the process of doing this project and, and it was at a, a escalated, uh, timeframe at the time, uh, did all this additional work. So tasks A through D. And then if we wanna go a little bit deeper on that, uh, restroom, they would have to redo some of that engineering. So there's that cost to do that. So this, this includes a change order for Christopher Burke Engineering of $44,300.
Mr. Chairman, just to ask, ask to my question. So I know that pickleball is very popular and I have absolutely nothing against it. The idea of doing something wonderful outside of beautiful weather is, is, you know, appeals to me, but I'm curious, like 10 seems like so many and I, and, um, so is it, is it because, is there like, is there a reason that 10 was the number or is it because that's just the best use of that space? I'm just not sure.
Yeah. It's a very good use of that space and there is large demand for it. So, I mean, you, you can do 20 courts and it would be full.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? Trustee Law?
Um, I, firstly, I don't really have an issue with it, but I have a concern about the noise because when I was on Parks and Rec, we did have a few complaints from residents and I remember hearing them talk about it and that was with only one court. So the question is if we put 10, you know, what kind of complaints are gonna come out of that? And then what's the work around in the future? We do have to start dealing with complaints with this. Um, and your recommendation, Ray, where would be the best place to put 10 courts?
Uh, well, eventually the, uh, development of the 9750, the triangle includes an ice rink. So what could happen is you could locate pickleball courts at Centennial Park where the ice rink currently is and there is no residence that would be impacted by that. So it's already a sports complex. In the middle of that complex there, it would disturb residents.
It's, uh, any other questions for the comments? There's a pretty straightforward question. Obviously, Ray and Stan, just some questions about, uh, that number pickleball, that use and that location. So we'll follow that conversation. Mr. Walsh, do we need to modify the?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, procedures standpoint, we're in the committee format and it was a motion to move or approve and authorize the execution of Change Order Number One and Contract Amendment A. It really should be a motion to recommend to the board of trustees that it approve and authorize the execution of Change Order Number One and Contract Amendment A.
And the blueprint, the second, or simply modify the?
Yes. Just amend the motion and amend the second.
Trustee Malany?
Yeah. Ray, I will move to amend the motion to, uh, recommend that the village board approve and authorize the execution of Change Order Number One.
My second.
There's no other discussion? We just need to call this call roll. Yes. Call roll, please.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Wall?
Aye.
Trustee Lee?
Aye.
And Mayor?
Aye.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for a couple of months, irrelevant, sort of business? We'll proceed to, um?
Mr. Chairman? Trustee Katsinas?
We motion to adjourn?
Sir?
Motion to second that. Call roll.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Wall?
Aye.
Trustee Lee?
Uh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, time is 7:55.
Why don't we take five minutes before we call a more specific, you know, we can all stand. So thank you back there for five minutes.
Thank you.